Want to take a moment to reflect on one of our members of the council that we tragically lost two weeks ago today. Mike Long had been a member of the council for a couple of terms, served two years as president, and unfortunately, we don't have him with us anymore. So I'd like for you to join me before we get into anything else in a moment of silence for Mike. Thank you. Now, if you could just stand up and join us in the pledge and prayer.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for giving us today. Thank you so much for giving us our beautiful county, our beautiful citizens, and those who try their best to make decisions in the best interest of our county. Please be with the Long family. Please be with our first responders. And please be with those who are in need. Thank you so much. We appreciate you, and we come to you with thanks. In thy name we pray, amen.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order. If you are speaking tonight and presenting, make sure you come up to the microphone and turn the microphone on so we can hear you. So we'll start off with the approval of the minutes from the February thirteenth meeting.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Kim, second by Kathy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by usual sign. Thank you. Sheriff's Office says nothing. Gail Chapman.
Good afternoon, Council.
Hello.
Okay, this is a transfer request from my computer equipment budget line to create a new budget line for dues and subscriptions for my commercial industrial department. This will be to fund a subscription to Postar, which is a company that provides rental, lease, income, apartment information, all kinds of information to help Jennifer Spires, who is my commercial industrial supervisor, to fight the appeals. I'd like to see us be able to fight them at the county level instead of being able to fight them at the state level because it's so expensive to hire attorneys. And if you go to the state, you're pretty much, you pretty much have to be represented by an attorney, and you have to have an appraisal, or you don't get very far. So this information that she can gather, she can gather it from all over the world, and she can have it at her fingertips and be able to get that information quickly. And hopefully, we'll be able to solve most of our appeal cases at the county level. So this is going to be taken from computer equipment for this year, but for next year's budget, it will be an added line in my commercial department budget.
Is this a correspondence type, where you go in and it's like a research-type software, where you research a certain topic or item, and it gives you kind of like a chat GPT, like what you should be responding to or something like that?
No, no, there's no, there's no chatting going on with it. It just, it basically, you can look up any properties that are sold in our county. It has all of our properties sold in the county or in any state that you want to look at. We can bring up all the comparables. So if we've got, if we've got the Kohl's buildings selling, and we want to know what it's selling for, we can bring up all the Kohl's in whatever state we're looking at and see what they're selling for per square foot. We can look at leases, we can look at income on rental apartments, which is honestly our biggest appeal right now, is the apartments. And so that information is just going to be, all she has to do is click on a button, and it brings up mortgages, it brings up who the buyer is, who the seller is, how we can contact them. So it's just a world of information to be able to help process, hopefully process quickly the appeals that we get.
So it's a comparison?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And has new funds already been created?
Excuse me?
The new funds already been created?
I believe so, yes.
It's just a matter of funding it now.
And this is out of your perpetuation fund?
This is out of reassessment.
A reassessment fund?
Yes.
Can you tell me, do any of the neighboring counties use this software currently?
Yes, Allen County has used it for a long, long time, and I have emailed with them, and they are very happy with it. They've been able to stop not all of their appeals. There are some that are going to go to state just because the representatives or the attorneys are going to take them to state. But for the most part, I think they've been able to settle a lot of them at the county level by being able to pull up the information and tell them, this is what we found, this is what's on the market, so you tell us what you've got different. And most of them can't do that. So if it's on the market and we can verify that, that helps us be able to stop it early.
What about smaller counties that are similar to our size? Do you know of any other counties that are using it?
I have not checked into the smaller counties. I tried to stick with the ones that have a great deal of commercial business, and Fort Wayne is one of them. So I have not checked into smaller counties to see what they do. Most of their work is hired out to vendors, and so I have not taken that step yet.
And you see this as a savings for us?
I see this as, yes, I see this as a savings because what I have to pay for an attorney per hour is outrageous. It really is. I've got a couple right now at the state that we're fighting, and it's not just one attorney that gets involved in these, it's two and three attorneys, and you're paying all of them. And so when you start getting into the expensive commercial properties, their appraisals are more than double what a residential house appraisal would be. So if we can try and stop some of it at the county level, it's best for the taxpayers and for all of us.
Is this the 11,400, is that a reoccurring annual fee? Like a subscription annual fee?
Yes, it's for basically two people to be able to use the site. So at this point, that's all I feel is necessary for our office is to have two people available to it. So that's all I signed up for.
Is this going to be used for assessment purposes or just for appeals?
It is not going to be used for assessment purposes. It's basically, well, I wouldn't say not going to be used for assessment purposes. I think we can, we can pull that information in when we go to value our apartments and see what is on the market and where the rents are at currently. Because all their stuff is like up to date within, within two or three days. So it's, we can pull that information up and look, use their rents, and see what it is per square foot, and see if our values fall in line with that. So yes, it can be used for assessment purposes. That's not our biggest goal, but yes, it can.
Any other questions?
Do you see that as a time saver then?
Yes, it takes, for her to look at them right now, it takes several hours to pull this bit of information and this bit of information from here to search here and to search here, where now she can just go to one place and everything is there at her fingertips. So yes, it is going to save a great deal of time for her.
Yeah, we've got a motion from Delanda to approve.
Second.
Yeah, second from Kimberly. Any further discussion? All in favor, usual sign? Okay, thank you, Gail.
All right, thank you, guys.
Bill Holder. Good evening, Bill.
How you doing? Good evening. I don't think all of you know me, I'm the Council's, I'm Bill Holder, the GIS Director, been doing this for quite a few years. So this is kind of a first of its kind thing I'm going to ask you about tonight, and it's a State of Indiana GIS offices for the first time. This office has been in existence for about 15 years, and they're doing their, the first time they've ever put out a grant. And all counties in the state can apply for up to $30,000, no match or anything like that. It's more kind of like a pass through because we're probably gonna, it's kind of intended that you're maybe going to hire a vendor to do it. So it'll be like that. Just a little bit of background, though, for quite a few years, maybe about 10 years, every county in the state has had the responsibility of providing the state four different data layers. They have to provide parcels, roads, and address points and local boundaries to the state. And that comes in all kinds of, from depending on how technically advanced the county is, could be really good, or in some of the very rural counties, might not be very good at all. So that's kind of what they're trying to do is try to bring all the counties up to a certain level with this. We're, we get recognized as being probably one of the more with it, but there's certain things, we're kind of, I'm kind of a one-man show here, so I don't have time to do everything. And that's why this will be helpful to me. There's a lot of extra things we're going to have to put into our road and our address point layer that are needed for 911 purposes. So that's kind of what we're going to, there's other things you possibly could use this for parcels also, but the two main things they really want you to use it for is to improve your address points and your road center lines, which is what, what 911 uses and is published on Beacon. It's just used in a lot of different ways. So, so we're, I'm basically asking for approval to apply for this grant. I got to talk to account commissioners first and got approval from them, and I'm here to seek your approval.
So moved.
A motion from Kim to approve. Second by Dave. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Can I just have a quick question? So is this like a one-time expense or?
This is like a one-time grant?
Yeah, or like a one-time expense, so you get this done and this pays for it.
Right, yeah, so it's kind of helping us build, build out some, there's a lot of fields that are required for this, what's called Next Gen 911, in your address point and road center line, in road center line layers. So it's, yeah, so it's getting in, we'll have to then maintain it, but I mean, a lot of this in a way, we could almost do ourselves, but it would take a lot of time to do it. Because in a way, when I've been sending this data to the state over the last number of years, we've been doing quite a bit of work to get it prepared, but they're almost taking it to another level where all these, all these extra fields added that we don't really use a lot. But I think as the 911 systems that let's say, that is used in the dispatch center progress, they will want to use some of these fields that we don't currently have. So it's really kind of for the purposes of 911.
Okay, thank you. And it says it's a seed grant, so it's kind of like a helping everybody get on board with all the points.
That's right. That's a good description, yep.
Thank you.
Anything else? Hey, all those in favor, usual sign? Thank you. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Let's see. Kelly, looks like you're the only one here.
Long time no see.
Right, exactly, you and Kathy. I am here today to ask for permission to apply for a grant for reentry court from the Indiana Office of Court Services. It's the same thing we did last year, we have to do it every year, reapply. Last year, we asked for about 170, which is what we're doing now, and we got 110 last year. So we're hoping to get that, at least that much.
And this is an advance grant, not a reimbursement?
Correct.
Is there a match to it?
Nope.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion from Kathy to approve.
Second.
Second from Delanne. Any further discussion? All those in favor, usual sign? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
Circuit Superior Court, you're going to do it? Alyssa is going to stand in for Circuit Superior Court Salary Ordinance Amendment.
Just a salary ordinance amendment for probation officer. The employee is being replaced by a former employee with more years of experience, so we need to do an amendment to the, to the salary ordinance, $81,719.40.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Kim, second from Rachel. Any further discussion? All those in favor, usual sign? Thank you. And nobody's here from Soil and Waters, so Alyssa's going to step in again.
I'll do that one also. It was requested to hire an employee at a higher experience level wage, so the committee is recommending an exception to amend this retroactive as of March 10th for conservation program field tech in the amount of $53,479.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Motion Kathy.
Second.
Second from Delanne. Any further discussion?
Is this, is this a new position or?
It's not a new, it's not a new position. It's just somebody else replacing somebody.
I was just saying, it's a replacement position.
At a higher level.
Because they had more experience, isn't that correct? Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor, usual sign? Thank you.
Thank you.
Lakeland Regional Sewer District.
Good evening, I'm Jim Hany. I'm the President of the Lakeland Regional Sewer District Board of Trustees, and I'm here with Mark Kaler tonight to request that the council reappoint him to a four-year term that would expire in April 2029. Mark joined the board two years ago to fill the remainder of a term vacated by Rosa Ritchie's resignation, and that term expires next month. Mark's been very instrumental in helping us move the board along. Currently serves as Vice President of our Board of Trustees, as well as serving on two different committees established by the board. And prior to 2025, he also served as Secretary. So with that, Mark and I'd be willing to answer any questions you might have.
I know those, those are a lot of work. Very time-consuming. We appreciate you stepping up to do that.
Yeah, and not a lot of thanks.
Right. Anybody have any questions? No, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Rachel made the motion to approve. Second by Dave. Any further discussion? All those in favor, normal sign? Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you for stepping up.
All right, we've got three presentations coming up, and I ask that those of you that come up to do the presentation, to limit your presentation to a maximum of five minutes. So the first one up is Cosco County Convention and Visitor Bureau.
Good evening, how are you this tonight? I'm glad to see the sunshine.
Yes.
And thank you for the opportunity to let me just give a quick update from the Convention Visitors Bureau. I'm Cory Humes, I'm the Executive Director, and I want to thank you all for your continued support in promoting Cosco County as a great place to live, work, and play. Just real quick reminder, what we do at the CBB, as our acronym, is we are a destination marketing organization. We are responsible for promoting the county as an attractive travel destination, and we receive those innkeeper's tax fundings from the KCC RBC, and we're very grateful for that team, and thank you for that. They're a great group of representatives. Why this is important? Visitors boost our economy and assist in sustaining jobs, especially in our hospitality industry across the county. In 2024, we welcomed roughly about 1.2 million visitors to Cosco, which was a major impact of economic impact for us. We had, annually, we receive an economic impact study from our State Tourism Office. They provide this as a free to us, so we don't have to invest in that. Through that study, through Brockport Analytics was the company, we had about 186.3 million of visitors spending, which supported over about, according to the report, about 21, I can't talk, 2,140 jobs, which also helped tax revenues roughly about 19.6 million, and this was for 2023. Real quick about what we've been doing over the past year. We have a marketing strategy, a market three-year plan that we work with our Board of Directors, which is about 12 members of the community, and we do also seek the support of the KCC RBC to make sure that we're all on the same page of promoting Cosco County. And we do this on a regional, local, and a state in Midwest collaborations. In our digital marketing efforts last year, we reached about 1.2 million visitors, which kind of go with that number that we estimated. And the platforms that we do utilize are our visit cosco county.org, our website, our social media platforms, as well as our passport program, that we have about seven active passports that we encourage visitors and residents alike to join, check in at locations across the county. And we introduced three of them last year. One is Waterways, which is focused, of course, on our water recreation. We have over 100 lakes, but only about 26 or so are actually public access for visitors to access, so that is a way for them to check in. We did one around our Halloween season, which were our haunted hideaways attractions. We know that's a niche, but people like to know, like the Barbie Hotel has had ghosts before. People do travel for those things, and then we did celebrate the holiday season with all of the holiday displays across the county. We also do not only digital, we also do print advertising. We did, we were featured in about 16 publications last year, which include Midwest Living Magazine, Travel Indiana Magazine, and Travel Leisure. Those were articles that were written, we didn't have to pay for, so we just earned that media, which that is our favorite part of media. And we did public, we did advertise in about 11 publications. We printed roughly 65,000 brochures, 50 of them are our annual visitor guide, which are in your packet. We distribute those across Cosco County, across the state, on the Toll Road, in visitor centers like ourselves, and we do send them out to requests in a number of leads that we receive. And last year, we, I know this might seem interesting, we know that maps are still, a physical map are still needed. We know we live in a digital world, but the number of visitors that were requesting a physical map, so we updated that for residents, relocators, whoever needs that. So we, that's a big one. We printed about 10,000 of those last year, and we're, if you need a map, let me know. Also, again, through the ARPA funds, thank you for supporting the digital sign. We were able to put at least 200-plus messages on that sign last year, promoting Cosco events, health and wellness, what we wanted to showcase to about those eight-point-million vehicles that travel in front of the visitor center annually. We were also able to get a new roof for the visitor center with support of the KCC RBC, which we're glad for, so we can keep that visitor center going. And lastly, we were able to erect about 17 clearly Cosco Road signs in all of our communities across Cosco. So you see that is our current brand, that is a community-wide brand. We manage it, but we want the community to embrace it as well. So those, all those communities like Etta Green, Milford, all of them have a sign or at least chew up in their communities. So we are just really glad we're going strong. If you had any questions for me, I just wanted to provide a quick update. In your packet, there was an annual report that kind of has some more numbers in there for you, but we're really grateful for your support and what you do for Cosco.
We really appreciate what you guys do for our county.
Thank you.
And being old school, be quiet, Chris. I like paper maps a lot better than I like digital.
I'm with you. That's our number, outside of our visitor guide, a map, physical, is our number-one request.
Do you charge for that?
No, it's a free. All of our resources, I know, all of our resources in visitor center are free. And we also have state maps, which, anyway, I could get in a long story about that, but yes, I'm with you. Okay.
Well, I just want to congratulate you because you just won a big award, and
Thank you, Kathy.
Tell us what that is. Because I didn't write it down.
Thank you very much.
I did see it.
Last week, we were fortunate to be able to be awarded Best Visitor Guide in Indiana at our Indiana Tourism Conference. We're a part of an association called Indiana Tourism Association. They host an annual three-day conference for sessions, professional development, and they do awards dinner. We did submit our 2024 visitor guide, and we were able to win in our marketing category. So we were very glad, thank you for that. It's a big win for us to showcase Cosco, and I love our new one, so I hope maybe we can bring another one home next year.
I have, I have a quick question.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you very much.
For all you do.
Yes.
And how is it that you track? I know you have publications in different areas. Do you track, like, I know the Toll Road, and back in the day, I was involved in visitors, visitor service stuff.
Yeah, all that fun stuff, yes.
But, so do you track where we get people? Do you ask them how they heard of us, things like that? And do you track your publications or online situations as far as booking?
Good question. Yes, we do all of that. So a visitor does come into the visitor center as one example. Matthias, who is our visitor center and media manager, tracks where those, those visitors are coming from, so we know where they're coming from. When it comes to like print publications, we add a QR code in every advertising space. We do this because we want to know if anyone's actually scanning this, and that is our way to show our return on investment on if it is. So then through that, we're able to find out if this is a good investment. Also, the 1.2 million visitors that we received last year was from data from a software that the KCC RBC did sponsor for us. It's called Placer AI. It is an opportunity for us to know where our visitors are coming from. We majority have a huge heat map within the Indianapolis-Chicago areas, a majority of where our visitors are coming from, which is familiar, but it also showing some other markets. So we're able to track that of where those visitors are coming from, so we know that we're marketing in the appropriate markets. Or, hey, maybe there's a small group that's growing and growing. Hey, maybe we need to be looking at Detroit, for example, and other Midwest communities. We do try our best to stay in tandem with our State Tourism Office. They have a bigger budget, but they have different markets they are also in. But yes, we are trying our best to make sure we can track that and see what they're coming from.
Do you do any kind of regional marketing with, like, with neighboring counties?
Do you like to collaboration?
Collaboration.
Yes, we do.
As far as like the Chicago market or the Indianapolis market, that kind of thing?
So we're part of a very small membership. It's called East Region Tourism. It's a region of east, trying to promote ourselves. We do collaborate, we go to shows together to help save money, and we're also part of another organization that way. It's called Indiana Foodway Alliance. That is to showcase all of our food. If a visitor is coming into a destination, what are they probably more likely, number one, going to do? Eat. So we want to make sure they are going into our local restaurants. That is a way that we do that, and we do attend trade shows and help market on a broader scale than maybe our budget would allow. Yeah.
Cool.
Thank you, good questions, I like them.
You have like a survey or anything as far as after they're here and they visited?
We haven't done something like that. We've considered doing surveys or studies related to that to see if there's a better way we could be marketing, or hey, what does it look like? Most of our feedback is they have a good experience, but when it comes to, hey, what are we sharing or what are we telling? I think that would be a great opportunity for us, it's just sometimes those studies come with a higher price tag. But it's a, it's a good one. We'd like to know, and maybe even what residents are feeling, how are we marketing that to? Yes, we are visitor-focused, but it's important that our residents are, love the community they live in as well. But good question, not as of now.
Very good, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next is the Warsaw Community Library. Hi, Heather.
Good evening, and I'm excited to follow Cory because we are partnering with the Visitors Bureau to bring a national touring exhibit to Warsaw, Indiana next summer, and we are one of 50 libraries across the US to get this, so it's really exciting.
We're good.
And what's the exhibit of? It's the Americans in the Holocaust Exhibit.
Wow.
Thank you. But I'm here tonight to talk to you about our feasibility study that we just had done. It has been 30 years since the library's last renovation, and as you can imagine, things have changed quite a bit in 30 years. What I want to actually start with real quick is just, we finished our 2024 statistics, so I brought a highlight sheet for you to see. And the reason I want to celebrate this is because almost every number that we have is up, showing our usage. So we had a 15% increase in our cardholders and our visits to the library, almost 109,000 visits to the library last year. Program attendance is way up, over 10,000 people coming into our free programs. We also doubled our number of study rooms from two to four, and we had over 4,000 people coming in to use those study rooms. Behavioral coaches, entrepreneurs, tutors, social clubs coming in because they don't have to buy a coffee or pay for a space, so lots of use. Also, meeting room usage, way up, and we're proud to support local groups, local government groups, Indiana Gateway Digital Academy, Department of Transportation, the list goes on and on, and lots of local resources too. So we also added a little green box at the top that shows our economic impact. So just on the digital and physical materials that we had checked out this past year, based on what that would have cost our cardholders, we saved our cardholders almost $10 million. And that's not even counting all of our free services. So we are doing all of this in a 30-year-old building, 30-year-old, 30 years since our last renovation building. It's a 1917 Carnegie, and I will do my best to go through this super fast, but basically, we had a feasibility study done so that we could better understand our infrastructure and facility needs, as well as community and staff needs that have changed significantly since 1998. And I am just going to skip ahead here. It talks within this booklet about libraries as third spaces. Basically, we're a place where we're often a cooling center, a warming center for people, a place where, again, you don't have to pay to come in and use our services, and a place to socialize, which is becoming more and more valuable. And that takes us into mental health. I'm on the community health and well-being page in the middle there. One of the things we're really excited to start getting into and partnering One of the things we're really excited to start getting into and partnering with Livwell, who is here as well. Um, we're starting to do health fairs with lots of social service organizations. We're bringing in the mobile mammogram unit. We're becoming a blood donation center. Uh, we're becoming a library with heart, which is a uh, blood pressure center as well. We have citizenship kits. We have all kinds of questions that we are answering at the reference desk, hands-on help with devices. We also get quite a lot of referrals from the jail and the county building. So whenever something happens, if people need a form, a paper, um, if they are just let out of jail, we often are one of the first stops for people just starting to get information. So moving right along, getting into the study here. Uh, they were able to identify some pretty significant areas that we need to look at. And one of those, in their own words, just skip back to page thirty-one. The entry sequence into the building is one of the most glaring issues in the building as it relates to the patron experience. Basically, it's overly complicated to navigate. And if you've been in the library, you understand that. And if you have been in the library with a mobility issue or trying to tote around maybe a stroller and a lot of bags, you also understand. You have to take two sets of stairs and two different elevators. Um, other issues that were identified was the parking lot. We have a lot of congestion. Our accessible spaces are on the wrong side of the drive. The current parking spaces are insufficient for the types of programs that we're holding. Um, so we're limited in that way. We also need to address our accessibility ramp on the east side. Um, the other issues are laid out throughout here. One of the things being our meeting rooms. You can see on this sheet here, it's National Library Week in April, so we have tons of events going on. Some of those events, we will have to pay performers twice so that we can actually accommodate the interest level that we have in the attendance. Uh, so I will skip ahead from there. Those are some of the main issues. There are others noted throughout. It starts to get into the facilities analysis on page, oh, I don't have the page for that now. But there are some little blue boxes that kind of pop out, some of the sections, some highlights from the sections. And within those boxes, those are brought out because nearly every single section that has to do with our plumbing, electrical, they note that it needs repair in poor condition or needs to be replaced. Again, we're thirty years old, so it's time. So going through mechanical systems, it says the same thing, poor condition, needs replaced. And then on, there's not a page number because we kind of created this. Our facilities manager took some photos. And on that last page that has photos where it says, um, well, it has three photos and one is the front of the Carnegie there. This is an embarrassing picture to put out there, but it tells the shape that we're in. That very first picture is right above our main circulation desk. And it, it shows that if you were to look up, you would see our ceiling literally disintegrating right above. Um, we have lots of cracks and, and different issues with the masonry all around. So the next page is a nice blow up. It shows all the age of the different systems. They only included twelve different systems on here. Not even mentioned our sprinkler systems, building automation and lighting. But basically, those things have a median life of twenty to twenty-five years. We are now approaching thirty. And you can see in the red column off to the right, just how long we've exceeded that. So our facilities manager is doing an amazing job of keeping things running. We're also paying a lot in repairs and it's just time to update after this long. So basically, the rest of the study goes on to show some examples of what could be done to address some of the infrastructure and the efficiency needs. And basically, the very last page of the study says that being able to do a comprehensive all-in-one renovation would be the best return on investment because we would be able to address infrastructure inefficiency and at the same time, be able to save the time that we would have to be closed and additional costs because much of that work is done behind walls above ceilings. So cutting down on a lot of work. So we finished our feasibility study. We have hired an architect and we're working on a schematic design right now. And um, yeah, we are excited that we can, as it shows, we are a well-used public facility and giving back to the community. And I know there's a whole lot of energy right now with everything going on with the Quality of Life Initiative. So we are excited to be a part of that, right alongside the schools, the parks and the library. Any questions at all? That was really fast.
Has your architect given you any kind of estimated approximate idea of cost?
That's why we're working with them. Their, their whole goal is to get us costs and we should have that by May.
So you guys are planning to stay there then? Cause I, I think I recall some discussion about moving it.
Yeah, because we would be looking at such a significant investment, we wanted to make sure we were doing the most uh productive thing that we could with taxpayer money.
Okay.
So, yeah.
May I ask anything?
The, the majority of these things are needs rather than wants.
Needs. Yep. And I would love to take anybody around on a tour um to show you some of the issues that we're having in the library. That's why we added some of the pictures to this, just to, to help illustrate that a little bit. But we have significant needs after thirty years.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Tammy Cocker from Light.
Hello, guys. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. Uh, it's been thirteen, a little over thirteen months since I was here and gave an update. And a lot has happened in that timeframe. So I want to share a little bit about that. And um, we're actually, uh, just like Heather mentioned, um, we're actually partnering with the library um, on, on one of our programs as well. And I'm going to talk about that. So, um, anyway, I wanna, some of you don't know who I am or know about Light, living in transition effectively. So I want to give a real brief, brief history um before I start um telling you all the things we've accomplished. So, um, my daughter was incarcerated in twenty seventeen and eighteen in the Casquiasco County Jail for um, a year and a half. And during that time, um, I learned a lot about um, the needs, potential needs uh, in the jail and that kind of thing. So I started just asking around in the community. Um, being Chamber Commerce Director in Syracuse for so many years, I knew a lot of people. So that helped me out, but um, met with the jail ministry and uh Sheriff Dukes at the time. And, you know, just looked at things, what can we do, right? What can we do? My daughter would say to me all the time, Mom, I keep seeing the same women in and out of the jail. Um, and so I started doing research. Um, and um, learned a little bit about Elkhart County and what they were doing up there. So I, I went up there and visited and learned some things, brought my ideas back to Casquiasco County and um, and Sheriff Dukes said, here you go. Here's the key fob and um, have at it. So um, I worked with um Courtney Jenkins at the time. It was my idea, my, the program I wanted to implement complemented JCAP. So I served or we served as an organization, the general population. And um, and we started basically as a reentry program. Um, but then a whole lot of things happened. Um, as I met with inmates and um, and talked to them about their needs. Obviously, there were needs when they got out, right? And um, there really weren't any programs. Um, there's a huge gap. Um, lack of transportation, lack of housing, um, those are the two biggest things. But um, just lack of support, not, you know, they were just going back to the same people, places and things. So then inevitably, they were ending up back in jail. So um, so then I thought, okay, well, what can we do to fill that gap? So um, um, that's kind of where and how we got started. Um, where we are now is um, Light has opened a women's recovery home. We just opened a men's transitional home and that's a partnership with Bowen Health. Um, our homes are both full uh currently. We have the Light Recovery Cafe, which some of you have been to. Um, and we appreciate that. And doors are always open, so come visit. Um, we've got, um, we became a regional recovery hub and a community recovery organization or certified recovery community organization. And all those things happened in twenty twenty-three. Um, we had, we were a hundred percent volunteer-based initially. We have eleven staff now, paid staff. Um, a lot of the people that are sitting here today are board members, volunteers, staff and participants in our program. So I'm, I'm, my heart, I just wanted to cry seeing all back here behind me because I couldn't do it without them. Um, so um, quickly then, what I wanted to share with you, back to transportation and housing. Um, I know that you all know that those are two big barriers. Um, they're special, especially barriers for people who are justice-involved or um, you know, coming right out of incarceration. And so we started looking at that and um, we were gifted with a twelve-passenger van by the Beaman Home um, a year ago, February. And we have put, um, well, we put a lot more miles on the van than this. But we've given a rise that total over eight thousand miles just in, in uh, twenty twenty-four. And that is just trips from Warsaw to Milford, Warsaw to Milford. We don't really take that van anywhere else. So um, we hired a rideshare coordinator who is a um, a young man who's currently on drug court. Um, he has done an amazing job and he coordinates all the rides. So we have an app. People can tell us, hey, like at fellowship missions, they get on the app and they tell us we want to come to the cafe or we need a ride and he coordinates all of that. So we have somewhat of a transportation program, but that's something that we really want to elaborate on. And we've got some ideas and things in the works for that. Um, and then in the way of housing, um, I mentioned, we have the women's recovery home and the men's transitional home. We're also looking into um, collaborating with a couple of different entities and um, providing supportive housing. So that would be supportive housing, transitional housing, to me is kind of the same thing. Um, supportive housing might be even the next step of them, you know, just being completely on their own. Um, these would be, um, they would, you know, sign a lease, have a deposit, pay rent, all, you know, all the normal stuff. The supportive housing would include children. The transitional home and the women's recovery home do not include, they can't have their kids there. So it's kind of a, a next step. So those are some exciting things that, that we have coming down the pipes. And I kind of skipped over what we did in twenty twenty-four, so I want to get back to that. Um, so let me get my numbers. Um, cause I didn't follow my notes here at all. Okay, um, just to give you an idea, the Recovery Cafe is, is probably, um, I don't know, that's kind of our biggest thing, other than the, the peer recovery coaches, which I'll talk about. But the Recovery Cafe is a safe space for people to come. Um, anybody's welcome. They don't have to be justice-involved or coming out of jail or prison or whatever. But those people are all involved, are invited to. Um, but just to give you an idea, in twenty twenty-four, we welcomed a hundred and forty-two guests, twenty-five volunteers, two hundred and seventy-five visitors and three thousand five hundred and forty-nine entries through our front door. So each time somebody comes in our front door, we have someone sitting at the door greeting them. And we have a, a software system um called Agency and we keep track. They have to sign in. Every person has to sign in if they're a volunteer, if they're a visitor, whatever. And we keep track. So, excuse me, so we had three thousand five hundred and forty-nine people come in our door last year. Um, our volunteers served, and I'm going to point out who did this. Our volunteers served three thousand two hundred and eight meals. And it's two ladies in the back row back there.
And they're very good meals, by the way.
They are. We always have dessert. It's home-cooked. And it's in a big thanks and shout out to the Milford Food Bank because without them, we couldn't do it. So. Um, um, also a hundred and sixty-three carryout meals. So we do offer, if a lot of times we'll have leftovers, sometimes we don't. But um, you know, if there is a need and somebody could use the extra food, we send it home with them. So. Um, the Recovery Cafe is a model that started in Seattle, Washington. And uh, so it's a membership-based program. So we encourage them um to buy in, right, to make a commitment. So they can visit three times. And um, after that, we sit down with them and say, so what do you think? Is this something that you think you want to continue to do? Um, here's, here's what that looks like. And they take a membership class, an enrollment class. They become a member. They're assigned to a circle. They have to go to that circle every week. They can miss three times unexcused and then they're disenrolled and they have to start all over. And there are some added things, added benefits if you're a member as well, but that's the big thing. Um, three requirements to be a member, show up sober, give back. We have chores that they can sign up to do and then attend your circle once a week. So um, we have inducted, in twenty twenty-four, we inducted a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty members. Now they're all not still members. Um, we've realized and noticed that our membership has stayed right around fifty to sixty people. Uh, it fluctuates all the time. So we'll have, you know, new people come in, become members, and then we have some people fall off or whatever. So. Um, so anyway, super excited about sharing those numbers. The cafe is um, is, is truly, um, truly a place where people can feel comfortable, feel welcomed. Um, and I've got a couple testimonials. I want to save time to share with you because um, that's super important. Um, our peer coaches, we have two male and five female who work diligently to walk alongside those coming out of incarceration, both county jail and IDOC. Two of our coaches are bilingual, which breaks down that language barrier. And because of partnerships Light has acquired over the past few years, our success rate in getting individuals into treatment within twenty-four to forty-eight hours is very high. Uh, in fact, today, my peer supervisor um, got a girl in in like an hour into treatment, cleared out Clarksville, but she got her there. So um, super, super excited about all the work that our peer coaches are doing. Um, they are required to, or it's suggested and encouraged that they meet with each of their peers once a week for an hour. Um, sometimes peers don't need that much help, but we're there for them and that's what we commit to. Um, sometimes people are in crisis and we need to meet with them more often, three times a week. You know, or, or longer periods of time, but we try, you know, an hour a week is what we try to shoot for. Um, our staff help with housing, employment, documentation, transportation, family reunification, mental health. Um, people who are on the medicated assisted treatment plan, we accept all pathways to recovery. Um, we even have a meeting on Monday nights. It's called that, um, all pathways. So, uh, let me see if I want to jump on anything else here before I share. I don't know how much time I've got left, but um, one thing I wanted to mention to you is um, Light was instrumental in implementing the SOFR team. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but I wanted to point that out to you. That's the Suicide Overdose Fatality Review Team and it meets once a month. We launched that in um, April, March, April. Um, Heidi Blake um is, was, um, I worked with her on that with Kcode. And I also worked with um, The Corner on that project. And um, I'm proud to say that we have already recommended two new programs to be launched in Casquiasco County. One has already been launched and that's the Community Reinforcement and Family Therapy, Family Training. It's CRAC and I always forget the acronyms, uh, what all the words are. But um, and we started um, doing that in Enchanted Hills. And that class will be um, in Warsaw next. And then we kind of want to get it around the county. So um, that class is, is kind of a support group, but it teaches families how to deal with their loved ones who are struggling with substance use, mental health, how to get them into treatment, the right, you know, the right type of language to use. Um, positive versus negative attitudes with them and, um, and things like that. So it's going really well over in Enchanted Hills right now. And then Handle With Care, which has kind of been Heidi's thing. Um, that's a program that um, with law enforcement and the schools working together. Um, if a child is involved in some kind of traumatic event and, you know, first responders were called or, you know, whatever, that there's communication from law enforcement to the schools to let the schools know this, you know, uh, this child was um, experienced a traumatic event and just be watching for, for warning signs or, you know, signs of distress or whatever. So um, that, that one is in the works, hasn't launched yet, but we're excited to, to be a part of that. Um, another partnership is with the Health Department, so, and Overdose Lifeline. Um, tomorrow I'll be receiving eighteen lock boxes shipped uh to Milford. And um, we're going to be, as a team, putting those up throughout the whole county. Our goal is to put one in every township, at least one in every township throughout the whole county. And our staff will be um monitoring and maintaining those. And let's see, gosh, there's so much more, you guys. I um, I want to share the testimonials, but I just want to make sure that there's not anything else here in my notes that I didn't mention. Um, be on the lookout for, for more uh information about transportation programs. Um, we do have a partnership with Lyft. So anybody can call us and we do an intake assessment and we can get them a Lyft ride immediately. So um, to wherever it is they need to go. So uh, there are some, some things that criteria they have to meet, but it's pretty simple. Um, I want to let you all know that we believe in practices. We believe in and practice collaboration over competition and people over processes. Um, we believe very strongly in that. So um, with that, I want to share at least one. I have several. But um, and a little backstory, the gentleman who wrote this, um, we sent those, these forms out at the cafe a few weeks ago and, well, it was end of January, I guess. And um, And, um, asked people just to write down what Light means to them. Um, this young man I met in the jail way back 2021 probably. And he's been in and out and in and out. Um, the last contact I had with him before he finally showed back up at the cafe was he was living under a bridge, uh, the bridge out by Wildman. Uh, we would pick him up at the BP and bring him to the cafe. He had his whole setup there. He took, took a picture of his room under the bridge and sent it to me. Um, he is in a safe place now and here's what he said. Light has single-handedly helped me get my life together. They were there for me when no one else was. They've shown me love when no one loved me. More specifically, they helped me get my birth certificate and my driver's license. They helped with gas as well as a ride numerous times. On a more personal level, they have taught me about Safe People and Boundaries. Those are two books that we teach. And opened the door to writing, which is another class that we teach, to help with grief and anxiety. They provided me with a safe place and a sense of belonging. They've given me a family. Um, so I just, I hope I painted a good picture for you of what Light has been doing and continues to do for the community. And, um, and I hope in the future that Light will be, um, will gain the support, um, in the community that we reside in and serve in. All of our services are free. Um, all of our funding is through grants and private donations. And, um, DMHA is a big part of that. And right now, our funding is not coming. So, um, I, this was a perfect time for me to come and share because I wanted you to know, here's what we're doing and we want to keep doing it. So your support is greatly appreciated and I thank you again for your, for the opportunity to share. Thanks.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
Okay, your boxes that you're putting in all the townships?
Uh huh.
So how did, I mean, are they just, I don't really know much about that. Can you explain how that works?
Yeah, it's a plastic box. I should have brought one. Um, and it looks like a first aid box. It's red and white with the, the lid on the front is, it pulls down and it's kind of frosted clear so you can see what's inside. And there's little individual doses of Narcan.
Okay.
And they're in a little Ziploc baggie. And it has the instructions on how to use it in it. It has resources, little cards with resources in it, how to get help. Um, and they're just free to take.
Okay, so you just open the door and?
Take as many as they want, yeah. We have one on the, the building and the church building in Milford.
Okay.
And, um, I just asked Rochelle today, I think it was, um, she's, she's refilling that. I don't remember what she said, where are you? That's in the little town of Milford.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah. Right now, there are only four nalox boxes in the whole county. So, yeah.
That's great.
Did you have a question too or no? Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Tammy, appreciate it.
Good work.
All right, committee reports, do we, do we make committee reports?
No, I think the Wage Committee met, but we're going to make some recommendations, um, in the April meeting. And the Will Committee will meet this in April. So those two committees.
So the Waste Board is going to have a tire recycling event. Apparently, the county highway picks up a couple semi-loads a year. So they're going to have one this spring and fall. They're, are going to limit it so you can't bring a trailer load in for a day. And that was kind of, they're doing very well. And the Airport Board, the power lines are almost in. And I, I had the impression that we're not lowering them, they're lowering them about 90 feet, which is significant. And the only reason they're doing it is because it, to come into compliance with FAA regulations. You talk to any pilot, they will tell you if a guy losing an engine going east, can't clear those, he shouldn't be flying the plane, but they, they have to meet that requirement, so that's what they're doing.
Okay. Um, the only thing I would like to mention is I believe that CAPS is looking at starting a fixed route and they're having a meeting at the Public Library on March the 25th at 5 o'clock. So anyways, that just kind of goes along with.
Yeah, I've already talked to.
Any other business to come before the council? Anybody here? I have one thing that I want to put out there tonight. As you well know, there is a lot of debate going on at the Indiana State House over tax reform. Senate Bill 1 is still alive, um, but it's being chopped up and, and put into pieces for, House Bill 1402 has officially died, but they're trying to pull pieces from it to put into the Senate Bill 1. As it stands currently, this county stands to lose a lot of revenue from property taxes from this tax reform. So I just want to caution everybody that when we start looking at budgets, especially at our department heads, there may not be anything there. There might be, stays the same as this, or there might be reductions. But we won't know anything of that until April 29th, once the legislator, legislature is adjourned. But I just wanted to put that out there that we are monitoring this every day. I spent like two and a half hours on, um, listening to testimony on 1402 yesterday and it was long and grueling. But this is the reality right now that we are going to lose money. We just don't know how much yet.
Yeah. And I think, um, Kathy and Sue Ann and I are on the Ledge Committee. So every Friday we meet and we get updates. And, I mean, it's like tens of millions of dollars. So it's a serious, serious issue.
Okay. Thank you. All right, if nothing else to come along, I will, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Backing all those in favor. All right. Thank you all for coming, guys. Nice to see a good crowd here. To the presenters for the information, appreciate everything and everybody have a good night.